...to be held July 6, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Alt House.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hargie.
Here.
And Mayor Linsky.
Here, thank you. Please stand up and join me in the pledge.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item up is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly known as for legal action. Do any council members have anything to share with the public?
Um, did we speak about the unveiling of the...
No, go ahead.
We had the military part in unveiling of the canine statue last week. It was absolutely beautiful, horribly hot out, but a great ceremony and we really had some amazing people there, the people that put the, um, I'm sorry, terrible faux pas, can't remember the gals that did, the couple that did the financing for the statue, but it was absolutely gorgeous.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think council member Pfeffer, Norman, Alt House, and I were the ones that were present and it was great.
Good.
Um, also, I just wanted to mention there's a women's conference on, oh gracious, let me pull my calendar real quick. Um, women's conference on July 15th in Snowflake in which Sylvia Allen will be addressing the public. It's from 1:00 to 2:30 and I'm sorry I don't have the location, I just know it's in Snowflake, but I imagine if you would look up on the legislature's website, we'll be able to find out where it is.
Okay.
Interesting thing to attend.
Very good.
Just add that my husband and I spent Independence Day with our veterans at the post and I'd just like to add to everybody watching, everybody out there, to any of our veterans, thank you for our independence.
Thank you. Any other, please?
So, one of the items attended was one of two budget info sessions that were put on for staff, Rudy presented, and you were there, Mayor, as well, just informing staff. As the public knows, we have public meetings to go over and discuss the budget with the public, but this was kind of the, the time to go over and review with staff how the budget changes affect them and go over some of the areas that were cut and what that means for each department, which, which I found helpful from an employee standpoint. Also interesting at that meeting, our human resources manager, Amanda Wilber, introduced and went over the new HR evaluation tool aimed at making employee evaluations more meaningful and effective and I'm glad to see that HR is implementing that. It seems like a good, good direction to move into.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Any other council members? No?
Um, just briefly, I did attend the Erase the Stigma event that the City of Cottonwood came on as a sponsor for. It was a great event, a good turnout, a lot of great, um, resources there available as well. And, um, was able to dress the crowd at the Fourth of July, uh, fantastic family fireworks event and that was great. And was one of the thing I did, oh, I was interviewed, um, by Jeff Warvitz on the radio show that he's got, Jeff Warvitz Show. I believe that's available now. Um, couldn't tell you how to access it, but, uh, it was a phone interview and we talked about the budget basically and gave kind of a brief overview of Cottonwood, so I think that was meant to air this week, but, um, I'm afraid I just don't have the details on that. It was a brief interview, but probably worth listening to, so. And that's all I have. Does, uh, city manager have anything to report?
Just two quick announcements. This Saturday, July 8th, the Aquatic Center will be putting on their second dive-in movie, which will be the animated movie Sing, which if you haven't seen it, it's a great, great movie. And those gates open up at 7:45 and you don't have to be a member of the rec center for this and there's no cost, so it's a really nice, nice event. And then tonight, if you haven't noticed, the Old Town Market or Old Town Music and Market opened up at 5:00 in the Activity Park behind City Hall and those will be going every Thursday night through August. That's it.
Good. All right.
Doug, did you say what time they started?
Which one?
The Old Town, the Market Night?
Five, 5:00.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. Is there anybody in the public who would like to address the council for an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes, budget work sessions of April 27, 2017, and regular meetings of May 16 and June 20th, 2017.
Mayor, I had a few typos that I went ahead and I gave to the city clerk, so he'll go ahead and take care of those. They were not having anything to do with content really, just typos.
Okay. And those aren't included in our packet now? Those, no, okay. All right, any other, uh, anything else from council? Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes then.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, council member Pfeiffer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And we move on to unfinished business, ordinance number 624, amending section 406 dot C dot two, parking loading requirements, design and location of parking spaces of the city's zoning ordinance by repealing and replacing sections 406 dot C dot two, dot lowercase C, and 406 dot C dot two dot G, second and final reading. And I believe we have Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I believe it's your last meeting, you represented the reasons for needing to change this. We've had several projects recently and in the past that these requirements, just some properties in town, it just doesn't allow them to meet these requirements, so staff put together some parameters to follow. Community development director and the city engineer would get together, look at the property, look at the scope of the project and be able to determine at the staff level if they can waive these requirements.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, we discussed this at length previously and gave our feedback and I feel comfortable with this. Is there anything else from council? Okay.
Make a motion?
Please.
Uh, make, I move to approve ordinance number 624.
Second.
Okay, council member Allen made the motion and council member Alt House seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. The ordinance is approved. Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 624 by title only.
Ordinance number 624, an ordinance of a mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending section 406 C two, parking and loading requirements, design and location of parking spaces of the city's zoning ordinance by repealing and replacing sections 406 dot C dot two dot C and 406 dot C dot two dot G.
That is tough, right? All right, very good. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. Item one, amendment to contract with SOMAS Engineering for Construction Administration Services on the Mingus Avenue Reconstruction Project in an amount not to exceed 15,000. Acceptance, item two, acceptance of a Library Services Technology Act grant from the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records Department to the, to upgrade the public meeting room at the Cottonwood Library. Item three, award bid and approval of agreement with Combs Construction Company, Inc. for the Airport Apron Reconstruction Project Phases Three, Four, and Five. Item four is resolution number 2896 approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District for the financial contribution from the district to the city for the Old Town Cottonwood Flood Study. And item five, new liquor license application submitted by Ankit S. Patel, agent for Cottonwood Chevron located at 1204 Highway 260. Are there any members of council that would like an item pulled from the consent agenda? Any members of the public which would like an item pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so council member Norman made the motion and Alt House seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Deputy Clerk, please read resolution number 2896.
Resolution number 2896, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District for the financial contribution of, from the district to the city for the Old Town Cottonwood Flood Study. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, new business. First item is public hearing regarding adoption of the city's fiscal year 2017 to 18 final budget. Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, council, I'm Jesus Rodriguez from the, in service as general manager for the City of Cottonwood. And today we're, we're going to have a public hearing allowing the public to go ahead and speak about our budget. I'll start off with a, a brief presentation and then, then council will open it up for comment and right following that we'll entertain any action on adopting the final budget. Uh, this, this presentation is similar to the, exactly the same as the one we had when we did the proposed budget and the only reason we're showing it again is to give the, uh, public a chance to go ahead and comment. Uh, so we'll just go, go through and again, if you have any questions as we go through, please interrupt me and I'll be happy to try to answer these questions. This is by no means the entire budget.
You have to turn it on?
It couldn't be that simple. All right, we'll start off by basically, the way the budget process starts with the City of Cottonwood, this is months in, in the making, but in reality, the budget process never ends. It's actually ongoing year-round as projects come along. There's adjustments that are made into the budget. But around January or so, we sent out some, the, a, what we call budget forms where we allow our department heads to go ahead and put together what we call a base budget. Our, at the beginning, our base budget is basically what does it take to go ahead and open doors? We don't need to have capital, we don't need to do personnel, basically what does it take to open those doors every single day for the City of Cottonwood? Um, when we first did the first round of budget meetings, we were, we were $196,000 in, in a, in a deficit and let me just kind of mention that, this is, we're comparing, everyday operational expenditures for a base budget versus everyday operational expenditures for a, for that, expenditures for that year. So we're comparing actual monies coming in, actual monies maybe going out. Once we've got that number, we sit down with the city manager and, and just a reminder, our mayor was in on, on these discussions this year, which was great to have a council member involved in, in those type of meetings. We looked at, reviewed personnel, we reviewed capital, reviewed any type of changes need to be done to the base budget and we also reviewed any type of programming that the department heads might be wanting. We did add some personnel, we adjusted some capital and when we were done with that meeting, we were in a deficit of $784,000 roughly. When that happened, we sat down with our department heads, go back with them for a second round of budget cuts. Uh, usually our department heads are not too happy about that, but they are used to it and they know that. We have to present a balanced budget to the city, to our council. We, when we requested our, a budget cut from our department head, we were asking about a 3% across the board. Unfortunately, most departments, even the smaller ones such as administrative, uh, city, city manager's office, our offices, admin services, uh, there's, there's nothing we can really cut except off supply as any contractual, but to make a 3%, we would have had to cut staffing. We were real fortunate that police department, fire department, rec center, parks, and tapping into some of our designated reserves, we did not have to release any staffing. So we were able to balance the budget and that amount is at $85,054,740. Let me kind of explain what we call a balanced budget. In the state of Arizona, for every dollar that's spent, we have to have a, a, a corresponding dollar to pay for these, for the expenditures. It doesn't state that it has to be a dollar that came in that door, it could be a dollar that came in that door last year or two years ago, meaning reserves or any kind of savings that we have or any kind of assets that we can turn into cash. So in reality, we are allowed to have a balanced budget even if our, our money coming in for that year may be short, if we had other years that had some money available and we were able to bank some money, we are able to use those to go ahead and balance the budget for the current fiscal year. And let me just also mention, $85 million includes grant funding, uh, any type of finance, uh, financing resources that we might be looking at. That doesn't mean that that entire amount will be spent. It is again, a budget, a plan that we have, so we'll, we'll touch base on how that number changes throughout the course of the year to where we finally have our final audit. Our personnel, uh, we had some staffing that we were requested, there was nearly, nearly $900,000 worth of staffing requested, only $122,000 was allowed and only if it is grant-funded, meaning if it doesn't, if the grant does not go through, we do not hire these positions. So out of that $121,000, we may not hire any of them if the grant sum comes through. Reclassifications in the just acquisitions, there was $18,000 worth of requests and there was only $6,400 appropriated for next fiscal year. Part-time positions, it was requested $96,000, none of the part-timers were budgeted for next year. And the way that breaks out is the top section of it is those full-time positions that were, that were allowed and budgeted and as you can see, all of them are grant-funded. We only have, we don't have this position because we didn't, we don't have a number for it just yet, however, if we do hire that position, there will be a corresponding revenue source for it. And again, this is basically, will only transpire if there's grant funding available for them. The bottom chart here are those reclassifications that were requested, as you can see, uh, though there were a few of them, all of these that were changing, most of them are in the police department area that we needed to make some adjustments and most communities, there is a differential in pay between the fire and police. Uh, we wanted to make that, that change and make sure that there was some variance between our firefighters' base salaries and our police department base salaries. So we made those changes, totally $6,400. There were some changes to some of the, the fire department areas, there were no dollars involved, we did with just a reclassification or a change to their ranges and most of the changes that were made were about two steps roughly, two, roughly 5% changes. All that does is basically increase their upper end, no dollars, additional dollars were spent. We, in community, it says, community services, that's actually parts of rec, I had lifeguard change to facility maintenance to ease up some of the pressure that they have to maintain the facility over there. And then I have to go ahead and mention that the admin services, general manager to deputy city manager, that happens to be my position and I have to make it clear that it is my position so that you understand that I'm, I'm that person that is, yeah, that's getting reclassed. There's no cost to that, it's just a change in arrangement, additional responsibility. Uh, police officer status, uh, they're the ones who made this budget really come together. They eliminated two officer positions, a total of $154,000 and one communication specialist. And, and what we do want to make clear here is that these aren't people that were furloughed, they're basically positions that we have out there that have, we've had a hard time filling, uh, that we've had, uh, there's been kind of a national trend of bashing police officers, which unfairly has been, uh, they're, they're used on our officers too. We've got a great force and fortunately they're painting everyone with the same brush, making it more and more difficult for us to hire people, not to mention coupled with the new, uh, public safety retirement programs that are now in, that are now in place, is going to make it even more difficult for us to hire, hire, uh, police officers. But nonetheless, uh, these were released, but we do have a caveat on there, the second section here, um, we're asking that the city manager again be reserved right to hire a police officer of these two positions if, two, two, if it happens, one, we find a qualified officer to fill that position and two, if we, uh, are able to find a funding to bring that police in, on, on board. Uh, and just so you know, and kind of, we have had this discussion that all these police officer positions that we've lost and that currently and, and, uh, in past years before that are right there, we're probably going to keep, as, as we fill our ranks, we're going to come back and ask council in future budgets for the allocation to get these officers back. This does not cause any, any issues with our police department, but it does put a little bit more overtime on the city and we'll do everything we can to find that additional officer to start replenishing those ranks. Uh, over the past three years, we, we eliminated a, an official, building official development services, general manager, four police officers, one communication specialist, and one public works superintendent. Of all these positions here, this is probably the only one that we're not looking to replace. However, all the others will somehow have to be replaced over the next few years, the city continues to have a lot of services requests and we're, we're just basically stretching our staffs thin to get these things accomplished. One touch base on our employee benefits, that those are always, because those are always big dollars when you're talking about, uh, an organization such as the City of Cottonwood or any city or community, we're service-based, we don't make widgets to sell, so we're all a service-based community and our, we're always under microscope as to how, how we deal with our employees. The mayor program for the upcoming year, roughly $432,000 is fully funded for the upcoming year. The cost of living adjustment, 0.3%, about $3,300 was eliminated right off the bat and just as a reminder, this is the third year that we have not issued a COLA for our employees. The longevity program that was implemented back in 2007 has only been actually used once and this year we didn't even propose it, saving the city about $49,000. Our health insurance premium, as you may recall, uh, we had, we're working with the Arizona Public Health Group as of July 1st, we are now with Chiroth Healthcare. Basically, our pool merged with another pool, uh, down in Phoenix, including Chandler School District and Scottsdale School District. We went from about 2,500 lives to about 7,500 lives overnight, which of course gave us a lot more buying power. Had we not done that, this particular increase would have been double-digit, our first actual double-digit, uh, over years of being with APHP, Arizona Public Health Group. Our retirement system, uh, as you can see, ASRS has been fairly stable on its, on its rate. Our public ser, public safety personnel retirement system, both fire and police department have gone up dramatically and they'll continue to come up dramatically as the system tries to go ahead and, and get its, its coverage, uh, to over 70, 80, or 90%. So those numbers are probably going to continue to go up over the next few years. As you may recall, we had an option to go 30 years, we decided to keep a 20-year and play a little bit more into the system so we could go ahead and get our, our portion of the system, uh, down. Just as, as a caveat, this is not a, a City of Cottonwood issue, this is a statewide, nationwide, global issue. Pensions have always been a problem during the down economy, many of them took a beating because they had investments that, that didn't pay out. At one point, roughly 10 years ago, maybe 15 years ago, they were, they were all funded over 100%, especially our, our system was funded over 100%. And now they're not funded anywhere near that and we're going to have to continue to pay until that gets straightened out. Again, we're looking to probably get this thing squared away in about 10 years, 20 years, excuse me. The City of Cottonwood has always had a lot of support for outside agencies, but we're always very careful who we, who we select. Most of the people that we provide assistance for are those people, those organizations, excuse me, that provide some sort of service or a service that the City of Cottonwood would normally have to have if they weren't, if these services weren't available through these agencies. Old Town Association, the Senior Center, uh, which provides, uh, food, Meals on Wheels program, uh, food for, for the elderly, the Humane Society, we would have to have some sort of, of animal shelter if it wasn't for the Humane Society. NACOG, that's water assistance for those that need assistance and by any chance, if you know of anybody or the public knows of anyone that needs assistance with their water, please contact NACOG on, on Cherry Street and they will happily try to accommodate and help out with their water, especially during this hot time of year where they're, we're consuming more water because of, uh, swamp cougars and such, uh, they're there to assist and we're there to help them assist the public. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, that's the only one that has an increase here and that's basically our bed tax, 3% comes in and goes right straight to them so that they can market the City of Cottonwood and the surrounding areas. Uh, Old Town Center for the House, we really, arts, we really support the, the arts in our area and, uh, that has paid a lot of dividends for us by bringing people into the area because we do have a lot of, of, uh, really nice events there, a lot of artists perform at that particular facility and bringing, uh, people from not just in town but out of town to come to these events. Uh, one of the things we'll be talking a little bit later on today is building community grants. Uh, we allocate $50,000 to help outside agencies as a request, as a proposal type of program where they provide an application with a, a, a plan of what they'd like to go ahead and, and, uh, and, uh, get funding for and the committee goes ahead and meets and decides on how and who and how much to fund these people, these organizations, not people, but the organizations. And then Birding Festival, we've always supported the Birding Festival in the area, general fund contributes a thousand, the water company, our water utility supplies the other, uh, thousand.
Rudy, could you touch on the Chamber of Commerce a little bit more? I think I've had some questions and I understand the bed tax, but I think some people, um, in, in our public or, or watching don't, how that number is derived and...
That, that is an additional tax, the, for example, we, the City of Cottonwood, we have a 9.35% tax and that 9.35%, 3% of it is what the city collects for its general fund. When it comes to, to hotels, it's not 9.35, it's actually 12.35 because that, that, that 3% goes from the bed tax from the hotels to our Chamber of Commerce to go ahead and fund their marketing.
Thank you.
We always get comments in the blogs about us going bankrupt and going broke and how we spend, but you know, the City of Cottonwood has, I've made it a rule of thumb that we will always keep some something in reserves and we do. We keep 60 days of the prior year's expenditures, being about 16.66% stays in a reserve. Now, this is not necessarily cash in the bank, it includes cash, includes investments, includes any type of assets that we can turn into cash relatively quick should there be an emergency. And these amounts are actually budgeted in the council's budget, that's why you'll see them go from $4 million all the way down to $300,000 when you do budget revisions because these numbers actually, if they're not spent, they're actually taken out of council budget, but they are reserves just for emergency purposes. The capital accumulation fund is a fund that we've had for a number of years, uh, during the down economy, council capped it at a million dollars and have to cap it a million dollars. This particular fund has helped us in, in several ways, mainly one was the contribution to the Senior Center when they were building their facility or remodeling their facility. We contributed, not only our CGG money, but about $300,000 out of this fund and we've kept it at a million dollars ever since. That's cash in the bank, uh, if the council should have some sort of a major capital project or any kind of project that they'd like to fund. Our undesignated reserves traditionally, council has asked for 100,000. Uh, this year we, we, we brought it down to 49,000 in order to go ahead and balance the budget, but we do maintain reserves. but we do maintain reserves for emergency reasons. This is a chart that we've used for a number of years because we have a lot of individuals that don't seem to understand how our budget works. There's three main sections to our budget. The first section, this is the original budget, that's what you'll be adopting today. Then we have a revised budget that is the current year we're in, that we're already spending and what, excuse me. Not the current year, next year, because we're already in July, last year's budget and what we were spending through June 30th. And then this is after we closed the year and our auditors had come in here, gone through our numbers and said, okay, you cut off on June 30th, this is all your expenditures, and that's where we end up. We have a lot of public that will go ahead and compare that number to that number there and, and we, we end up getting, we, we end up getting in a sense that we are all told that we're spending way too much money. The problem being is that this is money that has been spent. This includes grant money. It includes that money. It also includes any type of financing. And as you know, over the last few years, we have been doing some major financing, hence is why you see these very big numbers up there, because we have done financing. So to compare that number to that number is actually a fallacy. It's incorrect. The number should be contained to this right here. What does the city, what has that city been actually spending from year to year? I didn't, I didn't have it here, but is from 20, from 2007 to 2016, our average increase has been a little over 3 percent. That's, that's pretty unheard of. That includes, that includes our personnel, that includes our operational stuff, and it also includes our capital program. So a 3 percent increase average from year to year is actually pretty good and pretty, not, not too shabby for the City of Cottonwood considering all the things that we continue to do, all the great things we continue to do from year to year. Any questions?
Questions from council. We've been through it and through it, right? Okay.
Public?
All right, if there are no questions from the council, then I'd like to open it up to the public. And if there's any members of the public out there that would like to address the council regarding the, the budget, you're welcome to come up to the podium, introduce yourself, you're limited to five minutes. As Mr. Rodriguez said, this is a living document. We're going to set the expenditure limitation tonight, but you know, if there are any other changes throughout the year, the public wants to address the council about anything else throughout the year. This is a living and breathing document, so you're more than welcome to always talk to your council about the budget throughout the year. Okay. All right, then I'll close the floor and we can move on to Resolution Number 2893, Adoption of the City's Fiscal Year 2017-18 Final Budget and Setting an Expenditure Limitation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just, I'm just going to read off some of the things that you'll be adopting today. Basically, you'll be looking at adopting three additional full-time equivalents, only if grant funding is available, three job reclassifications, six range reclassifications, elimination of two officers and one communication specialist position with the option to allow the city manager to hire that one position if we find, if we have a candidate and if we find funding. You're funding the merit program, you're not funding the COLA, you're not funding the longevity. You are funding a health insurance premium increase of the 4 percent. The continuation of the present employee contribution structure towards dependent healthcare coverage. You are also approving the retirement adjustments, the general fund reserves that were noted, the capital budget of $978,000 and the capital projects in the amount of $17,589,000. And all these items that, that you are approving this year, it is a balanced budget, a budget according to state standards and there is a dollar change associated to each and every one of these expenditures.
Any, any final comments from anyone on the council? No, okay. I just want to take a minute to say thank you to the Police Department, Chief Gazelle, for really stepping up and helping us, you know, overcome those shortfalls in the budget. I know they're one of the larger departments, but they, they did step up and, you know, help, help us out quite a bit. Staff did a good job getting all the information together. Appreciate having an opportunity to sit down with the manager and, and you Rudy, to, to go through the preliminary stuff and hope to do that more next year and be a little bit more involved in the process next year. And, and in the coming years, I'd like to change, you know, the way that we do a few things. I'll be presenting some ideas to council, see how the rest of council feels about it. But I'd also like to promote some public outreach earlier in the year and maybe put together some sort of a, you know, budget committee, get some members of the public involved in the process early on. I think it'd go a long way in, in helping the public understand the budget process and, and help the council understand too, from the public's perspective, how this whole process works and probably provide some pretty good feedback to us. So, but you know, it just came in in November, so you know, we're kind of hitting the ground running and a lot of these things are hard to get in place early, but for next year, I'd like to implement some of those ideas, but I'll present this stuff to council too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And we are ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to adopt the city's proposed fiscal year 2018 final budget as presented with an expenditure limitation of $85,474.
Second.
Okay, council member Pfeifer made the motion, council member Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor and council, are you...
Yeah, I didn't see that in the...
Resolution?
Yeah, in the suggested motion, there, there wasn't a resolution suggested, but maybe we should amend that motion to approve the resolution.
By number?
I'm sorry, resolution, the resolution number is 2893.
How would you like us to do that, Mr. Horton?
I, I think you can just move to adopt the resolution and then the clerk can read it into the record.
Okay.
Okay, I move to adopt the resolution.
2893.
Do the whole thing?
Just 2893 if you just say the resolution number.
What's the number?
2893.
2893.
Second.
Okay, so council member Pfeifer made the motion and Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we got it right.
My apologies.
Thank you.
I was done.
Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2893 by title only.
Resolution Number 2893, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting the final budget of fiscal year 2017 to 2018 and establishing expenditure limitation.
Mr. Mayor, all right, all right, moving on. Item three, award of the city's building community grant funds.
Mr. Mayor, I was on the selection committee, so I'm going to step down.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mayor and Council, this is also, was also noted in the previous budget presentation. We set aside $15,000 a year to help 501(c)(3)'s and nonprofits in the Verde Valley, not necessarily in the City of Cottonwood. But we actually go ahead and this year, we had, we had several people, we had actually Habitat for Humanity, we had Old Town Mission, we had Catholic Charities, and we had Yavapai County Community Health. Part of this group, this committee, is not only do they work on, on trying to go through an application process, read the applications, and try to decide how they want to parse out the 15,000, but they are also looking at the policies and procedures, which we'll be bringing back to this council and at a future date. After a lot of discussion, this particular committee wanted to go ahead and get the most bang for the buck rather than trying to distribute so much, 15,000 to all four members. They decided to, to trim it down and award $10,000 to Habitat for Humanity and $5,000 to Old Town Mission for their projects. The, the, the projects, as I noted underneath, at the, towards the bottom of the, the president of the communication, the, the Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity had requested the entire 15,000 to serve 10 to 15 homeowners in City of Cottonwood and Verde Villages. Their projects costing anywhere between $500 and $1,500. The committee awarded them, or had to award them $10,000 and they would still be able to help quite a number of, of homeowners. The Old Town Mission requests $6,000 to complete a wood chain link fence at their community garden. We, the, the committee went ahead and recommended that we award them the remainder of the 15,000, that being 5,000, so they could finish their project. And they'll go ahead and fund the remainder of the 1,000 from other sources that they This was kind of a really difficult one. We encourage as many applicants as possible and when you see all the worthwhile projects that are out there that we didn't fund, we encourage people to please not forget it for next year, but instead make sure that they submit again next year along with all the other 501(c)(3)'s that might be able to go on to, to this particular program and maybe get some sort of funding. Like I said, we'll be coming back with some updated procedures and policies for this particular program and we're looking forward to next year and we'd like to go ahead. Now, this begins as of July 1st, so once this is done, I will contact all the individuals involved and we will make arrangements, signed agreement, and also we'll issue them their first year.
Very good. I think this is a great program. I want to thank council member Al House too for participating in it. I hope you enjoyed it.
I did.
Good. I participated on it in the past and I think it's a good program that could probably be expanded, you know, to help, you know, fund some of the other outside agencies. I think it's, it's good that they apply, it's good that it's competitive, I think it keeps them sharp and I think it's, it's a worthwhile program, so.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
Where is the Old Town Mission Community Garden?
Right where they're by the Mission.
Right by the Mission.
It's right by the Mission. It's a vacant lot that's back there.
Is it where their parking lot is right now? Is it where their parking lot is, that dirt lot right by, behind my office?
It, it is, it is not. It's, it's the lot to the north of their building, behind the building. More in the neighborhood. That's my understanding.
Yeah. I think that is correct. There's several vacant lots and I always get confused which one of those is, is on.
May I make a motion?
Please.
And I want to say thank you as well. The only thing that's painful is I wish we had more money to give out and obviously we don't this year, but it's something we keep trying each year is to increase that amount. So I'll make a motion, I move to award the $10,000 to Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity and $5,000 to Old Town Mission under the Building Community Grant Program as recommended by the Building Community Grants Committee.
Second.
Okay, council member Allen made the motion and Pfeifer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's approved, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next item is Resolution Number 2895, Appointing a Member to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Can we get the lights?
Thank you.
Is there anyone to introduce this item? Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have an opening on the Historic Preservation Commission. We had a commissioner resign. This person will fulfill the remainder of that, which I believe runs through 2019. We only received one application for this vacancy, so it's really up to you if you want to continue seeking applicants or approve.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now, is it just me, because in my packet I don't have any information, I don't have the application, does...
I do, I have the packet.
You do, okay.
But I do have a question too.
You have a question?
I have a couple of questions, but if we can talk to the applicant?
Sure. Darn, I must have downloaded the wrong packet then.
You can read mine.
Yeah, that'd probably be easier. Sorry, folks.
Not at all.
But, so we do have a process in place normally if there's more applicants than seats available where we, we go through a committee selection process. It's a, it's worked out well, but in this case, we only have one opening and one applicant. So what's happened in the past is that we bring the applicant forward, ask him a couple of questions and the council can decide whether or not we want to appoint that person. So if it's the pleasure of the council, then I'll go ahead and call Mr. Matthews forward. Thank you for being here tonight, thank you for your application too.
You bet.
And I'm sorry that I did not see it in my packets, I'm just going to steal council member Pfeifer's.
I read it.
If I may ask you a few questions, what is your interest in serving on the Historic Preservation Commission?
You've lamented the fact that you have a lack of volunteers to serve on committees and commissions in the city. I've been here for 13 years, I've been self-employed. I have a passion for real estate, a passion for history. I believe that as far as history goes, the only lasting legacy that we have, tangible legacy, are buildings in our neighborhoods. The stories are written down, we have pictures, documentaries, so I believe strongly in the preservation of our neighborhoods and historic buildings. The reason for doing so, I've been very successful in Cottonwood, no small part that it's some of the citizens and people of Cottonwood and several of the businesses. I've, I've reached a place where I've got time on my hands. So the proverbial, I'd like to give back and serve my community.
Right, very good. You're aware that the commission meets once a month and time commitment won't be an issue?
Not an issue. And this particular commission is the one I have the most passion for and the one I think I'm most qualified to serve on.
Very good. Well, we have a lot of fun, I can tell you.
Fun is good.
All right, are there any other questions from council members?
Do I have two questions?
Sure, please.
First question is, on the application, you failed to put your physical address. Do you have your physical address? What is your physical?
1760 Mariposa Drive.
Mariposa Drive, that's in Verde Village?
No, it's in Cottonwood.
It's in Cottonwood, how long?
Bills on Elm.
How long have you lived there?
Probably about six months.
About six months? I have a difficulty because when I look online, the only thing I find is that you're in Cornville or Verde Village.
You can run my license plates, I'll show you my driver's license, show you my water bill.
Water bill won't count, I, I've got water bills all over. If you own property, you have water bills all over.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a matter of record, which is easily discoverable.
Why wasn't it put on the application?
What's that?
Why wasn't it put on the application?
It should have been.
It's not, your P.O. box is on there.
Okay. I have one of those too.
So do I. Also a question, and I'm just curious because you've been here for 13 years and it mentions on here, it says, list any community service organizations or projects you've been involved with. And you listed a couple that you're going to be involved with, which are honorable and I, I, those are awesome. I love the Senior Center and I hope you're able to deliver foods for them. Actually, that's one of the things that actually saved my step, my mother-in-law's life, when somebody came along and delivered food and saw she had had a stroke.
Yes.
So honorable, is there any that you have already served on?
Right now, I am just starting with the Senior Center and Habitat for Humanity. I've been working with them, building wheelchair ramps, different projects.
I know, they just started that, which is awesome.
So I'll be, I'll be their lead repair guy.
Awesome. I do have, I do have a little concern because the address wasn't put, put on here and, and when I look up, I only see Cornville and it's a matter of record, so I might almost request that this be table until the next regular council meeting so that we can have proof that that's correct. Other than that, I have no issues.
And it is, it is a matter of record, easily discoverable.
Right.
My own property's all over the Verde Valley.
That's fine, so I would, I would put it off because we've already got two members that live outside the community that are part of the Historic Preservation Commission. So if we can just...
That was my question.
If we can just, just make sure that that's so and put it off till the next regular council meeting, I would appreciate that and that's my, that's my suggestion.
And let me know anything you might need regarding that.
But was this redacted? Because as you know, a lot of...
No, it's not redacted, it's P.O. boxes on there.
Was the street address redacted?
Is that addressed in Villas on Elm?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Because the signature's redacted and it looks...
So I have a question, because...
If we can just let council member Henry finish her thought, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, she wasn't speaking into the microphone, sorry.
I was just asking if we can confirm if, if the street address was provided but was redacted, because I know that...
I don't know why I wouldn't have provided it, it would be obvious.
All I'm saying is it's not there, let's do it again, let's get it right.
And I've looked at some of the city council paperwork, campaign paperwork, no... no physical address was provided, only a P O. box.
Well, we're talking about this, we're not talking about city council members.
Right.
We're talking about this here now.
Well, you do confirm, and Mr. Matthews confirms in his application, the question is, are you currently a resident of Cottonwood? The answer is yes.
He's been, he's been a resident for ten years, Cottonwood also includes Verde Villages, it doesn't say the city of Cottonwood.
Yeah, I think we...
I'm trying to be difficult, I'm just saying, let's get it right.
I think we need to change that form. Um, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna suggest that it really should say, do you live within the city limits of Cottonwood, 'cause it's, it is very vague, 'cause you can live in Bridgeport, or you can live in, uh, Verde Village, and say, yeah, I live in, in, in Cottonwood. Um, you stated you, you've lived there for six months, um, is this a home you're remodeling? Because I know those homes are, are being built, and seventeen sixty was empty for several years, if, unless it's one of the newer ones that was built.
This is one I'm keeping.
For you.
I've owned over sixty houses in the Verde Valley.
I owned a home on Mariposa Drive, so I'm very familiar with that particular street, so I know, uh, that particular house is, was, townhouse has been empty for quite a while.
Used to be, yes.
Yeah, so. I agree with, um, Councilmember Allen, if we already have two members, which was one of my questions for Mr. Ellis, if we already have two members who are living outside, um, and there was no physical address on the application, I agree, we need to be able to do some more research.
Well, he just answered and said that he lives within city limits and has done so for some time. We have a, we've all been very vocal in recognizing the need for people to serve as volunteers on these boards. I don't know what, I mean, what are we going to do to, to double-check his residence?
Tax records, motor vehicle records.
There's a variety of records.
My Arizona broker's license.
Haven't you already checked, though?
Have I checked? No, I checked online.
Human Resources, if I may just interject here, has, has confirmed, uh, by checking the water bills and everything, that you do live in the city of Cottonwood, so...
But, Mayor, you can't confirm that, water bills, I've got two water bills, and I don't live at two houses.
I'm, I'm just, I'm confused, because we haven't done this with any other applicants that we've had in, so I'm just confused.
Because they put their address on there. His, his address wasn't on there. That's my, that was my inquiry.
Why I wouldn't have put that on, or does it appear as though it was redacted?
It does on my, my version, it looks as though it was redacted, as was the signature, and so, um, he's saying he put it on the application, he's saying that he lives in the city limits, he's willing to serve, I don't know what additional work the city should do, um, are you, are we calling him a liar?
No, you want to put those words in your mouth, that's fine. All I'm asking is that we follow our own procedures. Our own procedures, and we've had this before, where people have applied that haven't lived in with the city, the city attorney can say that, that's fine. Is it gonna be hurt, that painful to wait two weeks for an, for a board that already has all but one member in it? Is it really gonna be that difficult?
I think we're putting additional hurdles, and we're discouraging the public from applying to serve on boards. It looks as though the address was redacted, most likely by a city employee, as part of our privacy rules, which other items are redacted as well.
All I've done is make a suggestion, if anybody doesn't agree with it, please move and go ahead and accept this applicant. All I've done, I'm not trying to be confrontational, I, I get tired of, for one person will do this way, for one person will do this, I just want it, and the mayor is very pro on that, let's do all evaluations the same way, well, let's do this the same way. That's all I'm asking.
And, and I don't, I don't disagree that to change it, uh, on the application, are you a, a resident of the city of Cottonwood, I think is important, 'cause you're right, a lot of folks, they don't realize if they live within the city limits or not, but, um, that's, that I think can be handled at a different time, not for this...
No, I didn't mean for it to be handled at this time, I think, in looking, in looking at it, and knowing that Mr. Matthews has lived in Cornville recently, um, you know, there's, there's a question, and, I mean, we've had other people who have come forward for other offices, even, you know, uh, council positions, that, you know, we were not able to verify their, their residence, and putting a P O. box was ki, is kind of, you know, a red, a red flag, and, you know, talking about Verde Valley, you know, a lot, um, not really specifically talking about Cottonwood, I agree that I think we can take the two weeks, and, and...
I think it's already been established that address was redacted.
I don't, I don't understand where that's coming from.
It's an if. Nobody said this is, and, and in order to find out, we need to contact the staff, and they're not here, so that's not been established, that's been assumed.
I own three homes in, I own three homes in Cornville, and if you count apartments, I own five in Cottonwood. That's Arizona.
But what we're asking for, then, from Mr. Matthews, is that he fill out the application again, instead of putting a P O. box, you put your physical address, and then, and then you bring it back.
And then we can be good.
But although he's, he's confirmed to us here tonight.
Actually, it's got P O. box and street address in the app.
Yeah, street address is down below, and it's not filled in.
Do you have a copy of your application?
Not on me, no. Mr. Mayor, um, I checked with Human Resources, and there wasn't a street address on the application, it wasn't redacted.
Okay.
I don't remember whether I put it on there or didn't.
I'm comfortable moving forward with the, I, I would really rather judge him on his merits, um, as opposed to whether or not he put his physical address on the, uh, application, but if, I guess I'd open it up for discussion with the rest of the council, how, how does the rest of the council feel about this?
Is that how I feel?
One thing, we're not seeing a lot of people rush up and want to take the job, I'm...
No, no, and with the...
You know? After this, you may not want to take the job.
Yeah, I was gonna say, gee, that's, he's still standing here, so...
Something to consider.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, you know. I, I'll, I'll make the motion, see where it goes.
Please.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, Resolution Number twenty-eight ninety-five, inserting the name, what is your first name?
Michael.
Michael Matthews.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, two nays. Did you catch the nays on that one? Okay. The motion is approved, thank you, sir, and staff will contact you shortly to let you know, uh, when we meet, and how often we meet, and, um, where we meet, and hopefully, hopefully set up some, uh, training as well for the open meeting law requirements and other such things, you'll be getting a packet, in fact.
I've looked into some.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. All right, moving on, ordinance, excuse me, Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number twenty-eight ninety-five.
Resolution Number twenty-eight ninety-five, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Michael Matthews, a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission, and establishing his term of office, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance number six twenty-three, amending the zoning map for two parcels of land totaling point eighteen acres of land located nine twenty North Main Street, nine twenty-five North Cactus Street, um, to change certain district boundaries and classifications from the present zoning of C one, light commercial to P A. D., Planned Area Development, this is the first reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council. This is the Le Main Development, at nine twenty North Main Street and nine twenty-five North Cactus. Uh, the Main Street is just down from the tavern, it's a vacant lot there, it's a really skinny one, I'm sure you've all seen it. The nine twenty-five North Cactus is adjacent to it, but across the alley that runs between Pima and Penal, and Main Street and Cactus. Uh, it's these two properties here, currently zoned C one, here's the alley here, uh, the applicant's requesting to rezone to P A. D., Planned Area Development, to construct a mixed-use, commercial residential unit on Main Street, and residential with some parking on Cactus Street. Uh, there's a little closer view of the project sites there. Staff's been working on this with the applicant for the past approximately two years, uh, moving forward, went to Planning and Zoning Commission. The land area is approximately point one acres between the two parcels, the one on Main Street's fairly small. The Main Street building's gonna be three stories, it's not gonna exceed thirty-five feet in height, um, the third floor will be set back about twelve feet, so you won't have a front the same as the two levels, it'll be set back to give it kind of some depth on it. Uh, bottom, bottom floor will be approximately twenty-two hundred square feet, with up to two commercial units, with three residential units on the top floor. Um, it's located in the historic district, so it doesn't have to meet parking ordinance, parking is exempt. There's a hundred percent lot coverage on it. Cactus Street's also gonna be three stories, not to exceed thirty-five feet, and all of the Cactus units will be residential, uh, they'll be for sale. There's gonna be a parking garage underneath, so residential will be up top, be the second, third story, there'll be approximately eight spaces of parking off of there, the entrance will be off of Cactus Street, with exit onto the alley. There's, again, no building setbacks for the Main Street building, it's a hundred percent lot coverage, because of the size of the lot, there's really no other option to develop it with anything. Uh, Cactus Street's gonna be ten feet front yard, fifteen feet on the rear, measured from the alley, with zero side yard setbacks. Landscaping is gonna be consisting drought-tolerant plants that you find in the local area. There's gonna be decks on the Main Street building, there's gonna overhang the city right-of-way above the sidewalk, and also on the alley, by five feet and three feet, respectively. The alley's gonna be reconstructed between Pima and Penal, and I'm sure you guys are aware of what's going on with that, that's been recently presented to you. The residential units will be sold as condominiums, and will need to meet the subdivision ordinance addressing condominiums. There's been a few last year, when I went to P and Z, concerns with parking. Uh, it's, because it's in Old Town, everybody knows parking's an issue, always has been. Hopefully, some projects coming up in the near future that'll be presented to you will help alleviate some of those issues, that's at least the plan. The history of the project, in March of two thousand sixteen, it was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission, kind of as a informational design review, uh, commissioners really liked it, they liked what was going on, what they were seeing. September nineteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to the city council of the rezon request. September twentieth, two thousand sixteen, council approved an encroachment agreement to allow the decks to overhang city property, city right-of-way. October of two thousand sixteen, the planning commission approved the design review aspect of the project. Uh, there were some questions at the original meeting, so they wanted it brought back, and they went ahead and approved that. May of this year, it's when the council approved the alley agreement with Le Main, L L C., Jerome Properties, and the city to provide design services for that. Uh, June twenty-sixth, planning commission again recommended approval, there was a little hiccup on one of the stipulations, and so they had to re-present it, make a new motion on it, and that was just to add a stipulation that was removed on the first approval, so nothing's changed from their original approval, what they saw to what you're seeing tonight, it's just an addition of a stipulation. Uh, this is all in your packet, so I'll kind of make it quick going through these, these are the elevations, looking west and, and north, um, some of the, some of these are in color, some of them are black and white. This kind of gives you a visual of what the building's gonna look like next to some of the other ones there, gives you kind of how high it is comparatively. Ordinances state that thirty-five feet is the max, and again, they're not gonna exceed that on the height of that building. That's the Main Street building, and you see how the top floor there is set back, does that twelve-foot setback, so it's not just one straight tall building going all the way up, and it breaks it up a little bit on the view. That's the Cactus Street elevation, that's what you see, here's the parking garage down below, two top stories with the residential units on them. Again, looking at the Main Street elevations, different views of that. That's the color scheme that they've proposed, uh, some of the brick that they've proposed on the outside as well. This shows where the decks will overhang, what that's gonna look like, again, it's not very far out there, three feet on one side and five feet on the other. These are photos of the surrounding properties, across Main Street, across Cactus Street, up and down both streets. Here's some more photos of what the property looks like now, or what it looked like last year, but nothing's changed, so it still looks like that. The applicant's here tonight to answer any specific questions you may have, uh, if you got any concerns, anything like that, should like to relate to them, they're, they're here as well. Some more pictures, that's the Cactus Street property there, that's the alley going between Pima and Penal that's gonna be improved, to be basically redesigned, rebuilt, and that's what that alley agreement was, that you guys hadn't seen recently. Again, that's the Cactus Street property, that's looking to the south on Cactus, that's residences that are directly across from it. That's all I have on that, and again, the applicant's here, I'd answer any questions you may have as well.
Does council have any questions for staff this time?
No.
Would the applicant care to address the council? Would the applicant care to address the council? And I apologize, sir, I forgot your name.
Hi, I'm John Helped, uh, with Le Main Development, and my sister's here, also part of the project, so, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm just looking forward to the project, it looks beautiful.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a blast.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I'll, I'll share a little bit of information with the council, what the Historic Preservation Commission thought, um, you know, they were very pleased with the design, and, um, you know, the concept really in, in working within a historic district is to not recreate a false sense of history, and they felt like this building really complemented what was going on in Old Town, but, um, i- isn't trying too hard to be, uh, a building that was originally there. Um, you know, per, personally, I, I think this, this one's great, and I think this perspective gives you an idea on how that, um, upper level will be set back, so it won't dominate that street front so much, I think that's kind of a concern that I've heard anyway from folks. And then, on the Cactus Street side, you know, the height of that's just gonna be, it's gonna be pretty massive, and I think that really will change the character of Cactus Street, and I think that is the concern of some of the neighbors there. Um, and I'm a bit torn on that, but it, you know, thi- this is really, I think, this is a great project, because it's, one, it's infill, it's very dense, and that's really, I think, where it's at, moving forward in the future, is to try to get higher density, um, and more urban infill, and this project, on both Main Street and Cactus Street, accomplishes exactly that, and it does so tastefully, so I think it's a great project.
I'm concerned about parking. Um, are there planned limitations for the project as far as the residential units, uh, with regard to number of vehicles?
The, uh, master development plan has, uh, for eight, uh, spots, eight parking spots in the, uh, on the, uh, Cactus building.
So, will each spot be assigned to a unit, or is it for...
That's the plan. That's the plan, yep.
Now, are there, there are nine units, though, or just eight?
There are nine units.
There are nine units, okay. So, you're short one unit.
That's correct, so far, yep.
And that assumes one vehicle or one parking spot per unit?
Yeah, the, the plan is, would be one parking spot per, for the, for eight of the units.
So, then, would any other vehicles in, per unit, park on the street?
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, that would be the, the option. Um, we're hoping to get a ninth spot, but, you know, we have to, we have to start with our architect and figure out if we can get a ninth spot, but right now, it's, it's set for eight, and the ninth would be street-side parking.
Now, Mr. Ellis, you said earlier, there are some plans on the horizon that might help with the parking problem in Old Town?
Yeah, there's some upcoming projects that you'll see in the near future that are hopefully going to address a lot of, a lot of the parking issues that we see right around this area, right here. It's not going to eliminate every parking issue, but it's certainly going to help.
May I interrupt, are you finished?
I'm finished, no.
I'm curious if, when you sell these condominiums then, will each condo unit be assigned a specific parking place or is it first come, first served?
I think our plan would be to, to assign a specific spot to each, to each unit.
So one?
Yeah, so it's not first come, first served.
Okay.
You'd actually, you know, own the spot or that would be your spot.
Okay. I could see violence erupting if it was first come. So essentially someone's going to buy a condo without a parking place?
Yeah, yeah, that's, we only have so much space, so.
So, by approving this tonight without that stipulation, you know, that's, that's what we're going to put into effect essentially is. There won't be enough parking for all the units available. Which I, you know, I'm, I am concerned about that. And at the same time, I really hate to design things around an automobile. And I'm hoping that this type of project will attract folks that, you know, maybe don't have two, three vehicles each, you know, unit.
A lot of people here in Cottonwood don't have a vehicle. A lot of people use public transportation or bicycles or motorcycles, you know. So I mean, there's that, that possibility of alternative transportation. And I mean, it's not a problem we've had here in Cottonwood particularly, but you know, New York and San Francisco and places like that. You know, you, you buy the parking spot.
Oh yeah.
So, you know.
No, it's, I mean, this is, I think it's, it's an unfortunate problem, but it's kind of a good problem to have because we are growing and we are infilling and, but you know, I feel like planning, planning your city around parking adequacy is, for vehicles is, I think, poor land use personally.
Well, here we're contemplating a commercial business and so with the residents with one parking spot short, that's, that's out of necessity, at least one vehicle that's taking up space on the street. And again, we're assuming that that's one vehicle per eight units, which I don't know many households that have only one vehicle.
Right.
I mean, you don't?
No, I sure don't.
I just have one running, I own five of them.
So I'm concerned because here, we're, this, this seems like a short-term plan. We're saying not only are you building without adequate parking, but also where are your shoppers? Where's everybody that hopefully will come to that business going to park? Parking in Old Town is, you know, as an Old Town merchant or a business, you know, someone that works in a business down here, I get comments if I park in the street and not, don't keep those spaces free for shoppers or people visiting other businesses. So, it's a big problem in Old Town.
Ma'am, you just come up to the podium if you would please and introduce yourself, thank you.
I'm Michelle Haupt. I actually live in Minneapolis, so I'm here for this wonderful weather that you're having. John and I are brother and sister and we've done some development projects over the years. This is a new one that we're doing. To address the parking issue, you know, part of what we've struggled with on this whole project is very small lot sizes with very large setbacks. So if anyone is going to develop any of those lots, we're going to have to work out, you know, how do you do parking with such small lots? We think that we're going to be able to get nine parking spots at the end of the day, so each unit will have its own parking spot. I think we have to get our architect re-engaged to make that happen. So, that's been part of our, our issue with the whole thing is how do you take such tiny lots in the city, provide parking and still create a good experience? So, you know, this is, I guess, what we've come up with at this point.
Thank you. It's certainly council's prerogative if we want to require that they provide parking spot per unit. We can, we can request that.
If I could add, the Planning and Zoning Commission had the same concerns. They had a lot of almost the same conversation you guys are having now. One of our commissioners, Mr. Horton, you might remember, did a very unscientific parking study for downtown and went around and counted the spaces. And there was, I think, over 100 something spaces, including on-street parking, which you can't really include because you're supposed to have off-street parking when you develop. So they had a lot of the same concerns, a lot of the same discussion, but they looked at what was coming down the pipeline in the future with these other projects that may help hopefully eliminate some of these issues. And again, the Main Street building is totally exempt from the parking because of being in the historic district. There's also been talk with staff to expand that district to eliminate the parking requirements for some of these other ordering properties that just, you can't really develop a building and parking on them, so.
I have one question.
Please.
Scott, I noticed the picture of the front of the Main Street building shows a fencing in front of it, kind of like the tavern grill has. That will not go out any further on the sidewalk than the tavern grills?
They would have to be requirements of clearance and ADA requirements and things like that.
Well, I've noticed in front of the tavern, some days when you walk by there, it's so crowded. People are tending to step down on the street to get around and it's not safe.
They'd have to make sure that they, they don't create issues like that.
All right, council, how do you want to move forward then? Are you comfortable with eight, eight parking spaces for nine units and?
Yeah, I think it's a great project, it's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful and I trust that if you can get nine spots, you will. It's only going to help you sell at a higher dollar all nine, all nine units. So it's really in their best interest to get nine parking spots, to sell them all at, you know, a premium cost that includes parking. I'm perfectly comfortable with this.
Yeah, I'm kind of, didn't think about the fact that there are some people that don't have vehicles that would prefer to live in a downtown setting like this because they don't need a vehicle.
And they can walk.
And that's something I didn't give any thought to, but that's, could be a trend that's coming along, so. And along with what Mr. Ellis mentioned about possible future parking projects, yeah, I think it's great.
It is a trend, in fact, both the millennials and the boomers share that desire is to live, you know, close to the core and not have to drive. So, I'm hoping it attracts millennials and retirees, which is what I think this project will.
Compared to what that property looks like right now, this is a no-brainer. It's beautiful, I really like it.
Yeah, it is.
Definitely difficult to work with those small lots and, you know, and again, the parking thing, I, I mean, I've lived and worked in San Francisco and areas like that and it's, I mean, it's just impossible, but somehow that city functions. People figure it out. And they shake their fist at each other once in a while, but it, you know. It's a very active city and this too, it's an active little community down here. The city stepped up and put in a lot of parking. I think that will help alleviate it, but we'll be constantly chasing the parking issue constantly, we'll never have enough parking. Anywhere, yeah. All right. I will, well, there's no motion, just first reading, so, yeah, if there's anything else then, no? Okay, we're done, thank you, appreciate it. All right, item six is request from the city's Parks and Recreation, excuse me, I'm sorry. Would you please read ordinance number 623?
Ordinance number 623, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, mending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona. For two parcels of land totaling approximately .18 acres located at 920 North Main Street and 925 North Cactus Street. APNs 406-22015 and 406-22020A. So as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from present zoning of C1 light commercial to PAD planned area development.
Thank you. Okay, moving on is request from the city's Parks and Recreation Department to waive sections 9.12.030 alcoholic beverages and 8.52.020 camping on public property of the municipal code for the Thunder Valley Rally Event scheduled for September 15 and 16, 2017 at Riverfront Park and for the closure of certain parking lots during the event.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for your time this evening. On behalf of the TBR Committee, staff is approaching council with regard to?
Would you mind just introducing yourself, Mr. Allen?
Heskey Allen with the Parks Recreation Department. And so, quite simply, Riverfront Park, because of what was decided by council previously, we have the split locations with Old Town and also Riverfront Park. Riverfront Park is kind of dubbed the Freedom Bird Entertainment Park. It's because the military service park is the charity for that park. The Freedom Bird was the plane that you flew back on from your tour duty, so that's kind of where that came from. Obviously, we're going to have the main stage down there with that, there's going to be alcohol sales. In addition to that, there will be tent camping, RV camping, that kind of stuff, all dry. There's specific rules when it comes to that, as far as noise and all that kind of stuff. We will have security, we will have all the appropriate infrastructure down there for it to sustain something like this. If you remember back to Tilted Earth, we did the same thing with that program as well. Simple fact is, there's not enough hotels in the area. And so the whole intent is to provide more heads and beds on the offside of that. Indirectly, it increases revenue sources for the program and also keeps more money local here in the program. Any questions with council?
I did have a question about the bed tax. Does camping count toward the bed tax analysis?
I'm sorry? What was that?
Does the city gain revenue from camping as far as the bed tax? No?
No.
No. And then is the city actually handling the campsites or is it through a third-party, you know, vendor who's doing the camps, campsites?
The city's actually handling the campsites, so we'll get the revenue from the campsites. And we did the same thing in Tilted Earth.
But the revenue isn't, they're not charged a tax, it just goes toward offsetting the cost of the event, is that correct?
Exactly.
And I had another question about the alcoholic beverages. Because one of the requirements is the glass. Are we waiving the glass prohibition?
That's inherent to waive the glass, but for council's information, we don't foresee any glass containers being down in the park facility. We typically use the aluminum bottles. They just stakeholder, they're more sellable, they're easier to pop, we get more distribution that way. So we don't foresee any glass bottles down at the park. It's just a part of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, most likely that any glass containers would be somebody who's serving versus somebody walking around with a glass container.
But are we able to make that a requirement? Because that's, I think that's a long-reaching safety concern. I think the camping's a great idea and I'm glad that we've, we've got that in place for Thunder Valley Rally. But, you know, the glass seems problematic for future use.
If it's, if council wishes, yes, we can definitely pursue that. The challenge is, is that distribution for, for example, your bourbons and those type of whiskeys really only come in glass bottles.
And it's like the wine, you know, if they're serving wine, unless they get box wine, but.
And I wasn't meant?
So it's not, again, it's not people carrying around the glass containers. They'd be served into a plastic cup or something like that and then they'd walk around with a plastic cup.
And I'm not concerned about the serving, I don't think that that's at as much risk of broken glass remaining in the area. I thought that there would also be glasses circulating. Now, there are bottles for, you know, off-sale, retail, but I also think the likelihood they'd be broken would be fairly slim.
Yeah, the only, only people that should have glass would be the servers.
Again, they're not going to be selling folks bottles of beer, they're going to sell?
Right, yeah.
Cans of beer.
So is there, I mean, are you going to be able to stop people from bringing their, their own liquor, their own, their own supplies?
It would be just like any other event we hold. I mean, there's always the potential that somebody's going to try and sneak something in and anything that isn't being served that the officers or the security people see, they would take appropriate action to have that removed and probably the person removed as well.
So we are going to have restrictions, in other words, people that attend this activity can bring in their own liquor to that facility?
It's actually a liquor violation for somebody to bring something in to an event that's been licensed or permitted by liquor control.
So, Councilmember Alkady, we'll actually set a perimeter with six-foot-tall chain link fencing and have control points that get into the venue with security checkpoints, just like we do for any other program, for example, Tilted Earth.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, then I would move to waive sections 9.12.030 alcoholic beverages and sections 8.52.020 camping on public property of the municipal code for the Thunder Valley Rally Event scheduled for September 15, 16, 2017 at Riverfront Park. And foreclosure of certain parking lots during the event.
Second.
Mayor made the motion and Councilmember Althouse seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's approved. Item seven, request for closure of Main Street between Pima and Cactus Streets on September 15, 2017, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. 4:00 p.m. and on September 16, 2017, between the hours of 6:00 a.m., 4:00 p.m. Closure of the following parking lots in Old Town, Old Town Jail, Pima and Main Street Lots, Finance Department and Civic Center. And designating motorcycle-only parking on Main Street from Willard to Pima Streets.
Mr. Mayor, council, TBR Committee labored over this, this whole layout when it comes to taking into consideration the concerns of the Old Town merchants, the concerns of the program and making sure it's functional, everything operates smoothly. Hence why, for example, on Friday, we pushed the road closure back as far as we thought feasible to 10:00 a.m. So we didn't disrupt that practice crowd coming down to Old Town. We pushed back, we pushed up the road, reopening the road as much as possible to four o'clock. That way, giving people a chance to get over to the Freedom Bird Entertainment Park and hopefully not disrupting the dinner crowd as much or creating additional revenue hopefully for Old Town by bringing down more folks for the dinner crowd. We foresee this year, you know, people will be getting used to this arrangement logistically and following years they'll start catching on. Hopefully, we'll get more locals coming down or tourists coming down who aren't necessarily interested in the program, but they know the street's going to be open and still come down for dinner. So, that was the thought process there. And as well with the parking lots, parking lots are a challenge because we have to get them closed early enough to get those vendors set up for the program that starts at one o'clock. But on Sunday, the intent is to have the parking lots open, I believe, by 10:00 a.m. on the dock. Hold vendors to do that like we have in the past. Any questions?
Open at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, you said?
Yeah.
I'm confused, it's closing at?
Did it say 9:00 a.m. or 10:00 a.m.?
Ending at, ending on Sunday at 10:00 a.m.
At 10:00 a.m.
I just have a question, again, Heskey. It's my understanding that we're not having a stage in Old Town, so what is driving the need to close down the street?
And that, that's the topic that the TBR Committee just went back and forth and back and forth. At the end of the day, as well as public safety and the fire department, the police department, the concern is safety. Is that you're going to get the motorcycle crowd down here. Rather than ad hoc, oh, what do we do with the traffic and the control and the issues we're having, forefront, get out in front of it, let's close the road down because a motorcycle tends to come up to the middle center lane and then back their motorcycle up. And so with all that happening up and down the street and then getting vehicles in that mix, we just foresee that it wouldn't be a safe environment.
So are there any vendors on the street or are they limited to the parking lot areas?
Only vendors in the parking lot and that's on purpose so that on Sunday, we open the, well, actually, each night, each evening at four o'clock, it's easier for us to open the roads. There's nothing on the road, it's only motorcycle parking. Where in the past, we've had the main stage on the lower section of town, which has caused us to have to shut the roads down earlier, keep them shut down and then not be able to open them up until Sunday morning. Now, we can open them up each evening because the main stage is going to be down at the park.
So there won't, apart from the safety concern with the motorcycle parking, there won't be any other items or displays in the street?
Correct. And we don't want to block storefronts for merchants in, in Old Town that fight to make it 365 days a year. make it 365 days a year, the intended program is to bring business down the area, and throughout the year, drive traffic, branding this as a destination, and keeping up that effort. We're actually going to increase the motorcycle parking this year, because it hopefully will wrap around Bocce's up to Cactus Street, and we'll be able to push traffic to Adriana's, which I know she struggled with in the past.
But with that parking plan, are we still able to bypass Main Street for those of us that need to be accessing our businesses through the old bypass?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll still be able to access, I believe it's on First Street, and then you'll be able to come down and make a left on Pima and go down Cactus.
Any other thoughts or questions, comments from council members? I think closing the street on this event is harmful to the businesses, and council knows how I feel about that, but I think it's the wrong location. I'm pleased to see it moving to Riverfront, and I appreciate the efforts of the committee to accommodate the businesses as well, as much as possible, but I still think it's a poor fit for this particular event. All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll do it. I move to approve the proposed street closure between Main-Pima Street and Main-Cactus Street from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Friday, September 15, and from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 16, 2017, closure of the Old Town Jail Tavern, Council Chambers, Finance, and Civic Center parking lots, beginning at 6:00 a.m. on Friday, September 15, and ending on Sunday, September 17, at 10:00 a.m., and to authorize motorcycle-only parking from Main-North Village Street to Main-Pima Street on Friday, September 15, from noon to 4:00, and on Saturday, September 16, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's a long one.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, and Councilmember Allen seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Thank you very much.
I stand opposed to it.
Oh, you do as well? Excuse me, okay.
I need to speak loud enough.
Okay.
Too.
All right, claims and adjustments.
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
I'll second that. Councilmember Norman made the motion, Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pay the claims. And then I would, well, item 11 here is pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-431.03.a. and/or A4, the council may vote to convene into executive session to receive legal advice, consider its position, and instruct its representatives regarding a claim for additional compensation from a vendor contractor. And I would move that we resolve into executive session.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Allen seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?[1746.87]